Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, January 25th, 2024. And the time right now is 7:00 PM. Just for the record, you have six months, six shopping months for Christmas. First item that we have on the agenda is called Order. Sherri, could you please call the roll? Yes, I did.
Council members present in establishing call, Folcher, Walker, Fisher, and Scarborough, and Gambos Remote.
All right, thank you. And please note for the record that I received a phone call from Councilmember Hanford yesterday. He said that he could be a little bit late this evening for a family item. So we'll just note his presence when he comes in. All right. Next thing that we have on the agenda this evening is Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Walker, you please lead us on the pledge. Thank you. And was Councilmember Beaumont not going to be here this evening? Okay. She said last week she'd not be here. Okay, so unless there's objection, we'll count, we'll consider Councilmember Beaumont is excused. Seeing no objection, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's under announcements and present, I'm sorry, public comments. Before I read the long script, is there anybody that would like to speak to the council this evening? All right, councilmember? All right, councilmember Cuddaback, why not? So the rules are three minutes, just name and how you're affiliated with the city, and you know everything else.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Patsy Cuddaback. My address is 20360 Corbridge Road, Southeast Monroe. And I just wanted to come tonight to, she's hiding, to thank Ms. Hassert for all her time with the city of Monroe. It, I was on council for 12 years, I've known Becky for eight. She did a fabulous job here for the city of Monroe. What I really appreciate about Ms. Hassert, obviously incredibly brilliant, smart, knowledgeable about finances. She also was incredibly professional with council. I served with her on her finance committee. And Becky had this wonderful way of distilling really difficult information and making it really easy for all of us to understand. So, thank you. I hear an echo. So I really appreciate Becky, appreciate her time here, and just wish her well. I know it's gonna be hard to replace Becky in the city, but very happy for her on her next journey in life, and I just want to come here and say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's great seeing you again, Patsy. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak to the council this evening? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. And that one would be announcements and presentations with a 12th legislative district update. We're gonna go ahead and invite Representatives Steele and Gainer forward. And we're gonna allow you to sit. And thank you very much for coming and joining us this evening.
Glad to be here. Well, good evening.
Some wrestle.
Yeah. Thank you so much for having us. It's great to be here this evening. I guess, you know, we wrapped up a very quick, very intense 60-day session this last March, and tried to solve some of the biennial issues around the budget. Didn't make a whole lot of progress on any major policy shifts, but are expected to go back into a January session now for 105 days, where we will write a new biennial budget. We will adopt a transportation budget, a capital budget, and then general fund budget. So part of what we're doing here this evening is gathering feedback from all of you, and things that you've seen, and things that you need, and things that you would like to see us address as we head into that session. So it's great to be here, and I just hope that we can have sort of a Q and A and back and forth.
Thank you.
It's good to be here with you. From my perspective, the kinds of things that were probably most of concern to me this past session were the things relating to transportation and environment. There are some things that are, will be coming back. I mean, just with the, when I think about the environmental issues, when we're talking about recycling, we're talking about, you know, organic waste and the impacts of the cities and counties. And, you know, from my background as a local government person, I'm always concerned about, okay, how, if we're gonna require something, how is this gonna affect the local jurisdictions? Because typically what has happened is the bill and the buck stops with you guys. And so I'm very cognizant of that as we have those discussions. I wanna make sure that the people that are providing that service are able to do it successfully. And we've had some good models to look at. And so as we shape those decisions for the state of Washington, we wanna make sure that we're not, you know, making it more difficult for these businesses who have taken it on because they, it is something that they can make work. And, and, you know, sometimes government tends to think, well, thanks for taking it this far, we'll take it from here, and we'll tell you how you'll do it. And unfortunately, it becomes, you know, counterproductive, and we actually lose the opportunity because it's no longer cost-effective for people to do that. So that, that's just, you know, one of the things we have. Of course, the other things that we're talking about as it relates to natural gas, I'm very concerned about that. And the reason I'm concerned about it is because there's a lot of energy that's being produced with natural gas right now, which we do not have a substitute for. And in addition to that, as you eliminate a commodity and depend upon one specific thing, and that if we go all-electric, we have to be very careful how we do this because we, you know, that, the demand for that commodity drives those prices up. So the projections that you're making about what it would cost, in this case, I'm thinking about, you know, new homes and being all-electric and not being able to have other alternative means, it drives up the cost of that housing unit, which is making it more and more difficult for people to, to have housing. So as we do these things, my goal is to try and do things in moderation. If we're gonna move that direction, that's fine, but we better have ways to substitute for what we're already doing. And unfortunately, you know, we don't. And I think we saw that, that's why that 1589 bill with natural gas was modified from its original intent to not require PSE to not allow new, you know, construction to have a natural gas. So I think those are the kinds of things that I'm hopeful that we'll have really meaningful conversations about because particularly people who are lower income, the impact on them is, is really significant. So we need to be very cognizant of, and really aware of the people who are being impacted. I mean, sometimes you have a great idea, but we've gotta make sure that it's well-vetted and that people, you know, have a good understanding of where that's going to take us. So then we, you know, I wanna talk just briefly about transportation. I know that that's something that's, I think there's, I'm pretty sure, I can't remember the name, the number of the road that you guys are concerned about, but five-something, you know. You know, the concern that we're seeing, you know, at the transportation committee level is the fact that the revenues are not keeping up with the new construction that we're, you know, we have right now. And 522 has been on the books for quite some time, and to me, that is a high, should be a high priority. So my goal, and I did have conversations with, you know, our side of the aisle and the, the transportation chair about, specifically about 522, and why that can't be, you know, just, I just wanna keep, keep in front of them that this needs to be done. And, you know, the, the response I got was, well, you know, we have, you know, 520, we have, you know, 18, you know, they're 500 and 700 million over. You know, the estimates, well, that money has to come from somewhere. The ferries, you know, obviously that is a real issue that we have. And I think I have, if they'd let me solve this problem, I'd have a different outcome. But I guess my point is only that the money is, is really tight in that transportation arena. And so these projects that, that will be very, they'll be good projects when they get complete, but unfortunately, in the process, we don't have the revenue that will backfill that, that cost overrun. And then what it does is it just makes all the other communities and, you know, projects that have been on the books for a number of years to wait more. And I think we're seeing that all throughout the state. So that's a very major concern is, you know, transportation revenues and making sure that our priorities match the, the needs and demands of the communities that they should be addressing. So that's kind of a brief, you know, overview of the kinds of things that, that I was working on through this session. As Mike mentioned, it was a 60-day session, and it went, it did go quickly. I will say that, you know, the initiatives that were out there, I think that, that had a kind of a tempering effect of sorts to some of the legislation that may have been put forward, that did not come forward. So that was, in some ways, from our perspective, was good, just because we were able to deal with less pieces of, of legislation. And hopefully, when we do with less, we're dealing with less, we do it right. And that's, you know, to me, is, is probably one of the, the bigger concerns is that when we have committee meetings where bills are passed out of committee, knowing, and the chairman will even admit that, well, this isn't done yet, but we'll fix it as we go. I mean, that's really troubling because they have some major impact. So hopefully, you know, with this, the new session, you know, that we both are able to represent you again because, you know, we feel like we have some real opportunities if we can just, you know, have a different type of discussion.
One, I would just, I would just sort of give some context, too. I mean, Representative Gainer serves, obviously, on the transportation committee. Both of us serve on the Rules Committee. And should Representative Gainer be elected to the Senate, my hope is that he will continue his tenure on the Transportation Committee. You know, those are both very, you know, transportation and the capital budget, which I'm a budget writer for, those are very important committees that would, would help the 12th Legislative District. And I think one of the things that's important that Representative Gainer sort of alluded to is making sure that we are focusing on maintenance and preservation of road systems that we already have in place, and maintaining the commitments that we've made previously. So 522, we've talked about this for a long time. And it's always attractive at the legislative level to, to think about new projects, new roadways, new bridges, new ferries. And in fact, we have a lot of obligation to projects that we haven't finished. And I think that's something that we, we would continue to remain committed to when we go back to the legislature. It's like, let's make sure we finish these things up before we start something new. Let's make sure we maintain the promises, or, or at least complete the promises we made. And so that's both, that's very important to both of us as we head back into this legislative session, and appreciate the support that the council has given and the guidance the council has given, and the very firm direction you want us to go as it relates to both Highway 2 and 522. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmembers? Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilmember Folcher.
Pardon me, I guess I shouldn't turn on my microphone until I move it closer to me. Representative Gainer, thank you especially for your comments on the ecological things, the recycling. If we do not take care of that kind of stuff to begin with, we're gonna end up with just more garbage. It's not recycling to begin with. You had also mentioned you're keeping an eye on the natural gas situation. I think that when you talked about unintended consequences, that is something that people far away are trying to tell us what to do with natural gas in the future. And we, just for example, we are a coffee state. How many coffee roasters run off of natural gas? That's gonna change the whole world if, you know, things aren't allowed to continue as they are. I understand planning for the future, but I also think that being aware of those unintended consequences is something I very much appreciate you talking about. And also keeping an eye on the 522 discussion, we're always gonna thank you for that. So both of you have been doing a great job, and I'm really liking District 12, so thanks very much.
You know, the councilmembers, Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
Some more just comments, not really questions, and my condolences of what you guys do, because I know it's incredibly frustrating. I like the fact that you're keeping the transportation infrastructure alive. I think, I was up when you guys were talking in Solton, and just talking about our state budget doubling over the last 10 years, and we have all these communities that feel like we're not getting that transportation infrastructure. And the reasons why maybe that we're not, and trying to kind of weave through that and make some sense of it. So I like where you guys come from. I like the information that you bring us and how you are keeping the state accountable for the use of their money, and we'll just keep pushing that forward. The natural gas thing, the Councilmember Folcher was talking about, I like your approach on that also. We have, I have up on my computer here, just natural gas is 8.6% of what we use to create electricity. And if you go down to wind and solar and nuclear, there isn't, as you said, there's not a change in that. So I would assume that those unintended consequences, that either nuclear, solar, or wind is going to come up to take the place of natural gas if we remove that. So just, I really appreciate the fight that you guys have for us, our smaller communities, and especially keeping that transportation infrastructure with Highway 2, 522. We could add 203 to it as well as it runs through town. Our railroad separation stuff just goes on and on and on. They demand that we grow, but we just feel like we, a lot of times, just don't get the infrastructure support for any of it, the multimodal stuff that's now on us, all of those kinds of things, the requirements, but none of the support. So just thanks for, for fighting for the little guys here in Monroe. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Councilmember Walker?
Thank you guys both for, for coming down and speaking. I've really appreciated so far having you guys, and that you do seem very receptive and accessible for, for us as a city, and I appreciate that. As Councilmember Fisher said, I'm sure that the work is very frustrating sometimes, but thank you for forging ahead with it. I know that, at least in, in my mind, the things that I'm really hoping for continued advocacy on is the, the story that's evolving about public defense, especially for a town like ours with a municipal court system and the, and the cost that that might have on municipalities. And then also the, the law that came up at the end of session last year about the, the state being able to have a say in conditional use. Just the, the overarching trend of states continuing to impose into municipal land-use control is just really concerning. And obviously, it's, it's what cities really lean on in terms of their ability, or their authority and, and levers to maintain their, their home. So thank you, guys. Appreciate you sticking up for the cities and making the drive over as well. Send some of that tan our way. Any other comments?
All right. I appreciate the work you've been doing for us. State Route 522 continues to be really, really important for us here. I had been working on State Route 522 since 2003 when I was a councilmember. I remember when they opened up 522, and we did the dirt turning, groundbreaking down by Paradise Lake Bird Interchange. I appreciated the work that was done to complete this segment. I really encourage you to continue working on 522. I have a hard time trying to explain to people why money that was in this coming year, that bumped yet another biennium. And, you know, it's been 2003, so 21 years that we've been working on trying to get that word complete, and I still have complaints about it. It's still hard for me to respond to our residents and our employers and our visitors here about why 522 goes from four lanes to two lanes back to four lanes. I travel to Seattle every, almost every day now, and I, if I don't get out before 5:50 in the morning, my wait time there to just get into the next legislative district can be 10, 15, 20 minutes. And for me, it's frustrating because I know that it's, you know, the former first legislative district. I know that politics got in the way of, of logical transportation planning, and that bothers me to this day. So I encourage you to continue moving forward on 522. That is gonna be a big thing that's important in our community. Appreciate your support, continued support for Highway 2. I know that the community's down Highway 2 in particular. It's really important for them. People that live there can't get out to go get groceries on the weekends. We have, the difficulty we have with 522 is just us getting to and from work, maybe Monday through Friday, but they're trying to live on the weekends and just go to the grocery store. So your continued support of Highway 2 is appreciated. And then, of course, I've get a, give a plug for 203 also, because people still take 203 down to Redmond, and I appreciate all of your work in those spaces. I also appreciate your support for law enforcement. Our police officers over the last couple of years, it's been difficult with changing laws. You know, what was legal last year is now not legal, now, now it's legal again. I appreciate your support in that space. I also appreciate your support with our coresponders in therapeutic court and things like that. So I know that we've had a lot of support from different parties with the city hall that you swung by to see that wasn't there right now. But, you know, it's, it's not just about transportation, it's not just about interview policy, but it's also about the things that we have to answer questions about time and time again, including homelessness and crime and people running from police. Thank you both for all of your work in those areas. Lastly, in terms of legislative agenda, we will be developing our legislative agenda over the next couple of months. I anticipate you'll get a copy of that sometime in the fall. It's originally transmitted, we'll be working with Luke on that. One thing, in case it doesn't make legislative agenda, that is something we continue to struggle with here in Monroe, is this. We want to make certain that we have housing choice here in Monroe, and we wanna make certain that not only do we have the roads and infrastructure to go here, but we also wanna have some degree of self-determination about how we grow as a city. It still is challenging for us when the county is able to say that they're going to expand our urban growth area on the edge of our city in directions that we disagree with. And right now, we're having a disagreement with Snohomish County about their interest in growing our urban growth area along Roosevelt Road. It's not an area that we envisioned growing at this time, and in fact, we were stymied from moving forward with growing in a different direction that was more logical. But the county was able to go ahead and bring that forward, and that bothers them. They're also trying to expand the urban growth area in Malpe, something else that we don't support, because we think that cities should be cities, and counties should be counties. We provide sewer, we provide water, we have a minimum of three officers on patrol at any point in time in the city. If you're in the county, in an area that looks like a city, you may have one sheriff deputy that may be taking care of many, many, many square miles, as opposed to here where you've got three in just a couple of square miles. So the more urban-level growth that the county allows for Snohomish County in what should be rural areas, like in Malpe areas, takes away from our ability to grow, our ability to grow residentially, but also in terms of our economy. And so to the extent that you can help us keep urban-level growth within cities, let us decide which way we grow, and then also help us annex territory, because that's the last problem that we have, is that the ability to annex territory is stacked against cities. And counties then use that against us, saying, well, you're not gonna grow, you don't want to. The reality is, is we have to go through more hoops than the county does to bring areas into our city, and that's the last thing. So again, we'll put together our legislative agenda over the next couple of months. We'll send that over to you, but I just wanted to share some of those issues that are a little bit technical, but I appreciate your listening to us.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think it's just important that we mention, too, Representative Gainer mentioned it, but we both come from local governments. I served two terms on the City Council in Shland, and, you know, Representative Gainer was a county commissioner for 16 years, and so it really does help inform our perspective in the legislature, and we understand what you're saying, and understand what your perspectives are as locally elected officials. And so thank you very much for sharing that with us. But also wanna just reiterate, we understand where you're coming from, and we are ready to advocate and, and fight for those local positions.
Thank you. All right, thank you both very much. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Yes. From, from you to us?
Yeah.
Sure.
So I wanna talk about two things particularly, one having to do with UGA's. But first of all, I know that you, Mayor, wrote a signature on a letter back in '06 or '09 or something like that.
Could've been.
Yeah, and it, it had to do with the county's involvement in 522, and coming up with additional funding. So how has that evolved, and what, what kinda, what is the status of Snohomish County's attitude toward that?
I really don't know. I don't work with Snohomish County, so I, I would venture this, that one council can't encumber a future council, just like a legislative body, and that at one point in time, and again, at this point, I get into sort of political folklore, if you will. At one point in time, there was talk that they wanted to form a transportation improvement district of some sort. I signed a letter expressing an interest in, in doing that. The county council at the time, from my recollection, wasn't interested in proceeding that way. And at the end of the day, that letter from '06 or '09, nothing ever ended up happening with it. So I feel that there are times where arguments are brought up that actually keep the conversation from moving forward. That is one of the things that I occasionally hear from people, is that the county said they were gonna fund it, and they decided to not fund it. And since they've reneged on it, we're not, the, the endpoint of that argument that I've heard from people is nothing happens. So that's one of the arguments. The other argument that I've heard is that it was on the books back in 1990, and therefore it just needs to get done, and we don't need to raise more money for it because we've already raised the money. That also is an argument that I've heard time and time again, that the result is no action. So for me, you know, I, I appreciate you bringing that up. At the same time, I've, over the course of the last decade, I've had to go, okay, yes, that was then, but things have changed, and to my knowledge, we're just not working on anything with that.
And the reason I ask the question is because of what you just said, is that when you don't have action, and you wanna see action, then maybe sometimes you have to, you know, kind of reassess, how are we gonna get there? And, you know, if the dependency will be, well, we're just gonna hold the line, wait till the state does it, I mean, a lot of us are gonna be long gone, and it may not be done yet. And, and I guess what I, what I'm looking for is some direction, I guess, what, what you would be willing, as a city, to, when I say promote or advocate for, you know, if, if that impact is something that you would consider, like an artit or whatever, to actually get some other revenue to maybe match whatever, get out of the state's budget, to actually make it happen, then, you know, that, that would be helpful as far as negotiating on my end at the state level. And if not, then, okay, then I, I will know that that's not an alternative. But I, I would ask you to, you guys to maybe talk about, decide, you know, get a consideration of how much you're willing to invest in those efforts, and with maybe the others that are party to the corridor.
Yeah, I, I think, first, the council and I would certainly discuss that. I have taken a position in the past where I have been supportive of doing something like that. The problem is, is that there are so many different partners that feel differently. And at the end of the day, my concern is that if we start talking about doing that, that there will be reason for others to not actually keep the money in the budget where it is, that they end up kicking the can down the, down the road. So while I, I would be very happy, you know, the council and I could talk about it as part of our legislative agenda for this coming year, my concern is that it would be a reason for opponents that wanna spend money on the I-5 corridor to say, oh, see, they're working on this, it's gonna take us a couple of years, and at the end of the day, I don't know that we're gonna be able to get all the parties to agree. So I'd rather, I'd love to do both.
Yeah, I, I think, though, when you approach something like that, we would, you know, the way I would approach it anyway, make sure that I had that, that state commitment, and then augment that with other, you know, rather than coming with that, hey, we're, we're working on doing our part, can you do your part? No, I, I would want that commitment nailed down before you kinda start telling, well, this is what we're trying, trying to do. I mean, I, I think we need to be very careful in whatever kind of negotiations. And then if I could just talk briefly about the UGA, because UGAs, as a county commissioner, I mean, I was looking at it from a little bit different perspective. I know when we first had this conversation about how this county is versus the county that, that I was in, we had, I think we had a totally different attitude toward that. And if I'm understanding you correctly, like with Malpe, that would be a standalone UGA, it wouldn't be associated with a city?
Correct. It's an expansion of an existing UGA. Yeah, it's a special type of UGA.
But it's, it's an unincorporated UGA.
Correct. It's not attached to, like, Mill Creek or the city of Snohomish.
And as it relates to Monroe, then, are you getting pressure to expand Monroe's UGA, or is the county proposing UGAs apart from the city?
Yes, to both. So the, the county, the county is looking at expanding our UGA in two areas. One of them, we've, we've agreed to support, which is a Davis UGA expansion, but the other one is along Roosevelt Road. And so that is where an annexation adjacent to our city has been proposed, where we wanted, we wanted to grow in a different direction along 522. where we wanted to grow in a different direction along 522. And we were stymied in moving that direction. So yes to that question. The other one, though, is the growth of a UGA that is easier for people to access who are trying to get to Seattle and Bellevue from, you know, where SR9 intersects with 522. So, you know, the transportation infrastructure, the thing that we're talking about with four to two to four, if you grow the UGA where the four lanes are, then it allows you to build that area up. So rather than investing in the road improvements to here and allowing us to grow as a city, whether it's a UGA expansion or growing up, however it is the city decides to go, instead, the UGA is being expanded in an area that's not attached to a city. And then you end up with city-level services and needs in the future that quite frankly, at some point, will become the next city of Malpe or city of whatever the case is. So we've learned about how that happens with Sammamish and Shoreline and some of these other cities that have come up in unincorporated areas. And I think our preference here is to have those businesses that are located in the urban growth area in Malpe locate here. I think that our preference is to improve SR522 rather than just building more growth that we're going to have to drive through to get here. So we suffer from that growth and also we don't get the benefit of demand because now we're competing with the county for business.
So I just would encourage city council and cities in general, because I did try this last session and Senator Short was working on the Senate side. And I was kind of the proponent on the House side to allow for some flexibility with the cities to maybe adjust your UGAs. Because when you originally put them in place for a 20-year projection, things don't always go the way you would like to see them go because of the property owners and who wants to develop where. And even as, you know, you expand your infrastructure, you may find that this is more cost-effective, good another way. So as we look at that type of legislation again in this coming session, I'm encouraged to try and track that, stay on top of whatever is going on so that it doesn't impact you.
So I'll let you cough there, sorry. If I understand you correctly, the swapping of areas of UGA is something that we have shown an interest in in the past. And so our issue here is Roosevelt, which is higher density. But it is, it's an area, an urban growth area that has not wanted annex into the city. And it has been something we've talked about where maybe rather than having that part of the UGA that doesn't want to annex, maybe annexing a different direction and doing a swap. So in a general sense, what you just shared sounds great. And that's why Councilmember Hanford will be very happy to bring you dark chocolate every Tuesday at 9:00 AM. Sorry. I thought I'd give you a hard time. So for the record, Councilmember Hanford just entered the meeting room. So thank you. Any other questions? Councilmembers, did you have any other thoughts? So we'll have a legislative agenda for you sometime this fall and we really appreciate your service. Thank you. Oh, yes, sorry.
The question would come up.
Should have said cough drops, not chocolate.
Having to do with public safety, any input that you can give, which here it was. But we need, we need input to actually see how things are working on the ground. Because you've seen in the last four or five years, some significant changes in the approach to law enforcement in general. And it's really important for us to get this right because it impacts people of all ages. You know, when you talk to seniors and when they don't feel comfortable getting around their towns, wherever it may be, you know, that really troubles me because I'm a senior. No, I, you know, seriously, I mean, everyone should feel safe and secure in their communities. And any input that you can give as to things that are affecting you that could help us, you know, when we're discussing legislation. Because we have to get to the point where people are accountable for their actions and make sure that, you know, all of society feels comfortable living in the community they're in.
We appreciate that. And the pursuits, I think, was a big step in the right direction. It allows us to hold people accountable. I know that we've had issues with interviewing juveniles and just with things along those lines. So we'll go ahead and we'll work with our chief and make sure that we have some of those things as part of our legislative agenda. Thank you. All right. All right, thank you very much, have a great evening.
You too. Thanks for having us.
All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I turn to the council. Insert jeopardy music here. You know, it's a short motion. Councilmember Foulter?
It's on, don't touch it again, don't touch it. I move to approve the consent agenda as written in the packet.
A motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Scarborough. Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor? Motion passes six zero, thank you. Next item on the agenda then is unfinished business. And this would be proposed code amendments to Monroe Municipal Code, MMC Chapter 2222, Downtown Commercial Zoning District with Planner Bright. This is item 7.1 under unfinished business.
Good evening. At our previous meeting, we held a public hearing for adding conditional uses within the promenade and council approved for first reading an ordinance that made those amendments. However, staff heard concerns raised over the generic criteria that's currently in the code. Similar concerns were also raised at Planning Commission and EDAB prior to coming to the public hearing here. So tonight, we're asking council to remand the item back to planning staff. That way, we can reassess the criteria and develop specific conditions for conditional uses just related into the promenade subzone. If you choose to follow the requested action on the screen and remand it back to planning staff, our goal is to bring this back to council at the end of July with those changes.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Foulter.
All right, I move to remand this item to planning staff to prepare specific conditional use criteria and other minor revisions to the proposed amendments as requested.
I have a motion for Councilmember Foulter, a second for Councilmember Fisher. For the requested action is shown on the screen, 7.1 unfinished business. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is council member reports. We'll start off with Councilmember Gamble online.
Sure. Well, I wanted to take a brief minute and just thank, I did, I know we've got the May report that Chief Jolly is going to be discussing, but in June, the events they supported, that the police department supported for a high school and for the graduation, it was just phenomenal. I can't tell you how many people I had come up and comment on the parade and just how cool it is that, you know, that we have a police department that is so involved. And, you know, I saw the chief there and was making his rounds around all the grads and saying hi. And you definitely could see the connection with our RSRO and our investment there with police officers. I will tell you one story that really got me. I mean, I watched it happen in front of me and I'm trying to remember. Oh, I know what it was, it was on the, one of the Moving Up Assembly that I attended. And I was standing with RSRO Officer Robinson. And we were sitting there talking, a parent came up to talk to him in front of me. And so I just kind of stepped back and he started going on and on about how much he appreciated, you know, the involvement, how he changed, helped change his, I believe it was his daughter's attitude towards police officer and anxiety of not being in school. And he just, he started crying. And just to see that moment happen in front of me and the impact that our investment in RSRO had in a family's life, that was, that was pretty cool. This organic happened right in front. And then you could, you know, I could get to see it as he, you know, he interacted with the student body and those that were graduating and those that were moving up. So that was really cool. And then just to get to see how all of the officers interacted with, you know, throughout the parade and then the send-off for the graduation, you know, and they, you know, they do the fire department along with the police, seeing the graduates off on the buses. It's just, it's pretty special, it's pretty neat. And then we post, put that stuff out there and I can't tell you how many comments we get, not just locally, but then, you know, it all ends up on social media. It's just, it's really neat, so I just really appreciate it. So make sure and extend the kudos, Chief Jolly, and it is much appreciated by all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanford? Thank you, Councilmember Fisher.
That microphone's working so good tonight. Love it. Went to the block party downtown on Main Street, which was great. I love that it was moved on to the other side of 203 where the food trucks were set up and the band. And, yeah, it was great, went down there with my family. Also, just enjoying our parks, went out and paddleboarded, boarded, came out kind of funny, went out and paddleboarded Lake Tye, which was great, I was again with my family. And then I have Snohomish County tomorrow, tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker? Nothing to report? Thank you. Councilmember Foulter?
All right, I also went to the downtown block party, that was a lot of fun. Janelle does a great job as usual. My favorite part would be the PUD high voltage demonstration. Did you get a chance to see that, the hot dog thing? Oh, yeah, that was awesome. Yeah, it doesn't matter, but it was so much fun. Okay. And also, just to mention, we had gotten an email as a council from our peer support, a report about how he has been, three particular stories that he's been working on. I appreciated that so much. I just, I mean, first of all, I appreciate that position. But secondly, I appreciate knowing what's going on and seeing success right there. Especially because, you know, I did grill a few of our staff members a couple of weeks ago on what was happening with different human services-type things. And that's, that is exactly what we want to hear. So just kudos to the city people in general, that was great, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
I too read that report and I concur with Heather. And success stories are always great and few and far between in that program. But it's good to have the program and it's good to have success stories in it. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to staff department reports and we're going to start off with PD report.
Could we time out for a second? I raised my hand again, sorry.
Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
No, I just forgot to say, I would be remiss if I didn't also in the last, Becky's last meeting, as a longstanding member of her finance committee and all that, just thank her for her years of service. Yeah, I'll probably be pissed for a while, but that's okay. You know, she can, we can, we can still get together for a glass of wine. But in all seriousness, just a true professional, you know, what she's done for this city is going to, has had a lasting impact, will continue to have a lasting impact. She's got some really good foundation for us to work on. It's going to be really hard to backfill her, but she has set us up for success. So we're, I'm going to miss you, truly going to miss you. But I am really glad that you're still in the community. And I'm sorry I'm not there in person and she knows I'm not feeling tip-top of the weather. So I didn't want to maybe give you guys something that you don't need. So anyways, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Fisher?
Okay, so of course, now I'm going to say something too about Becky. So you being such a staple and being right in my line of sight here, I forgot that this was your last meeting. So I think I wanted to forget that it was your last meeting. And just how much I appreciate you explaining things to me, being a newer council member. And as was said earlier, simplifying things for some blue-collar guy to be able to understand it. I really do appreciate that. And, yeah, you're definitely going to be missed and it's going to leave a big hole that we have to fill. So I appreciate all your time and your sacrifice for the city, so I really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I thought maybe we were going to do this a little later.
We are, but we can do it twice.
I'll just wait for then, okay?
Okay, sounds great. We'll wait for dessert, it's near the end. Our council meal here? No, no, no. That's why they give, you can come by, hit me on the head if we don't mention it by the end of the mayor's report. All right. Chief Jolly, you're up.
As mayor of the council, I would be remiss if I didn't, because your council's new sentiments about Becky, truly valuable, truly sincerely appreciate what she does. We have a budget that you're responsible for. A wide variety of things and it's going to be an absolute profanity, but it's going to be an interesting time. Your department report from my department is inside your packet if you have any questions. I would just point out that a couple of highlights with personnel. Gabby Escalante graduated from the police academy on May 29th, the mayor. We were honored to have him attend and that was a good time. And it's always a celebration to see youth coming into this profession in diversity. So that was a very nice event. On May 23rd, I may have mentioned it before, but Aloisa Rodriguez graduated from the Snohomish Signature Program, the Snohomish County Signature Leadership Program. And the celebration was at Tulalip, it was an awesome event. She spent several months learning and receiving this training and we're very proud of her. And then last, we're just very impressed by the synergy of our two community service officers who are working together, attending events, partnering with businesses, learning how to work together and provide seven-day-a-week service, so we've got some good things going. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, any questions? Councilmember Gamble, did you have a question, your hands up? Okay, thank you. All right, next report is the HR IT Department report with Director Werthen.
Hi, everybody. A number of positions that we filled, but I figured since it's the Becky show, I'll talk about what we're doing about that position first. So we have a person, his name's Chris, he's on board right now as our finance manager. He was able to sit with Becky for about six or seven days, he's an interim finance manager. So trying to get all of Becky's seven years out of her head in six days, as you can probably imagine, that's not going to happen. But we're hopeful he's got enough information to keep us going. We also just, the mayor just signed an agreement with the Proffman Company to bring an interim on. He will start July 2nd. Good news is, he's worked with Deborah Knight in a past life, so we will, he's already been vetted with Deborah. So that should be good. So he will help us, both those individuals will help us as we try to replace a critical position that is Becky. We're probably never going to find somebody like Becky again, but we're going to try really hard to find somebody. So that was item one. Item two, just walked out of the room when we go to anniversaries, probably because he knew I was going to call on him. But Jaka has actually been here 25 years. So Jaka started as a seasonal and now he's our public works director, which is a pretty cool story when you're sitting in my spot and able to talk to people that are seasonals, stuff like that about the future that the city holds. Also, kind of up there at the top is Aloisa Rodriguez that the chief mentioned and Kim Reeves, who works at the utility building at the finance department. So other than that, IT, everyone keeps breaking stuff, we keep preparing it. Mojo Communications is doing a good job, they're going to be helping us with a number of things. It'll take 25 years. See? Thank you. Yes. There he is, so, yeah.
So, so we were just going to congratulate you on your 25 years, but congratulations on that as well.
Happy we could help. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Yes, that's it.
All right, we're going to move on to the next one. We're going to do the public works department report with Director Roberts. Now I'm switching it up. That might, that might mess up the slides, sorry, folks.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. The department report is in your packet. I would also like to point out that the department report was prepared this month by Trevor Orr. He is our customer service specialist. Some of you may have dealt with him in the community, seen him out there downtown or some of the other places doing what he does for us, which is a pretty fantastic job of dealing with the 2.6 to 3 requests we get every day for service from whether those are internal customers, say a police fleet unit is down, or external customers, there's a pothole in my road, there's a trip hazard, I've got a problem with the street. street tree, you name it, that's what Trevor does, so I just wanna reflect that, I'm very happy that I'm not doing the report anymore, but also kind of, I think, a round of applause for Trevor and the great work he's done over the past year and a half having this job, you'll be getting another report at the end of this year looking at, at the requests that he gets, so. That concludes my report, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Next up is our Community Development Report with Planning Manager Trudlow. He almost became director for all of them.
I'm not ready for that, thank you, thank you, your report is in your packet, I just did want to highlight a few items and asking for input on the number of building permit applications, we'd received a request to change the format, is the new format working for you, you don't need to answer this evening, but I would love any feedback, the question that we've been asked is, can you provide the information on what you're receiving in addition to what you're issuing, so that's what we've got included in the packet. The other item is just highlighting that we did do a citywide temporary sign pickup on June 5th, there was a 10-day opportunity for business owners to come pick that, pick up their signs for free, and if they had not picked them up, they were disposed of on June 17th. And then finally, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but I did want to let you know, we successfully submitted all of our documents and received the second half of our $125,000 grant from Commerce for the comp plan update, do you have questions?
Questions, go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to thank you and staff for the alerting that was put out on social media and other places about the sign cleanup, like, hey, it's coming, it's coming, so that it wasn't just out of the blue, all of a sudden the signs are gone, so, I saw it several times and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I really just wanted to say nothing to report earlier, but I wanted to say, at the block party, you were fantastic withdrawing in community feedback and, yeah, you were wonderful, you and Lance, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Director Hassard, Finance Department report.
I don't know, the way that they're acting, they'll come get me. I'm gonna pretend to give you a report here tonight. The May finance report is in your packets, as we kind of talked about in extensive detail last week, in connection with the need for the levy lid lift, sales taxes continue to lag behind what we thought were conservative numbers for budget this year, all of our other major revenue categories are good and where we would expect them, but sales taxes are largest revenue category to the general fund, so just kind of wanted to point that out. I also got, or received this month's sales tax numbers, that'll be coming out to you guys next month, pretty much follows the trend, so something to keep in mind as you're getting ready to go into the next biannual budget. Outside of that, the report is in your packet, I am available for questions and to preempt all of you guys, I'm sure you will love the next person just as much, we are all different, but we all do the same things for you, I, I hope I'm leaving you in a good place and it's finally starting to hit me, so, yeah, it was a very, very, very tough decision and I'm gonna miss everything.
We're gonna miss you too, and you'll be back up at the table in a few minutes, so. Thank you, any questions for Director Hassard? Thank you, we'll see you in a few minutes. All right, Deborah, City Administrator report.
Great, thank you, looking ahead to the extended agenda. City council meetings, both the Public Safety Committee and the study session will be canceled for this time, stay for the meeting scheduled for Tuesday, July 9. We will have Legislative Affairs Committee meeting, presentation on relationship building with our elected officials from SAC, our state and federal elected officials, and then an update on the cogent strategies, deep dive session and their report. For the regular business meeting, we will have an audit entrance conference with our state auditors, Becky and I met with them earlier today. We will have a public hearing on the Mountain View Right Of Way vacation with Scott Peterson, and then on the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable, the meeting minutes and payroll, the Kroger opioid settlement, resolution number 2024-014, updating the city's procurement policies and procedures, and then the Port of Seattle Tourism Marketing Support Grant that the city received. On new business, we have an ordinance extending the downtown permit fee waiver for first reading and then department reports.
Any questions about the extended agenda? Okay, and I will be gone on July 9th, so Mayor Protem will be facilitating that meeting, all right, and then for the City Administrator's report.
There we go, July 30th, we have a special city council meeting and that meeting will start at 5:30 PM and that'll be to cover a number of items, we will have a branding update with Jay Ray, and if we need additional time to discuss a levy resolution, we'll have an opportunity at that meeting as well and then a couple of other agenda items for discussion with council. I do have a gigantic thank you as well for Finance Director Becky Hassard, the slide is not big enough to list all of the things that she has done for the city in her tenure here, working with her has just been an, an absolute pleasure, I would say, in addition to just being a fantastic coworker in here, she's also a very good friend, and I am extremely happy for her and the opportunity that she has in her new position with the Water and Sewer District. I also wanted to point out something that I don't think Becky gives herself enough credit for, we don't recognize enough in the work that she's been doing, and that's that she's a really active community member, she has participated in the Historical Society, she's a member of Kiwanis, she supports Miracle League, and then she also served on the YMCA both as a board member and as chair for several years, so she's given a lot back to this community in her time and I, I know she's not leaving us in that respect, that we'll still be able to see her around and call on her to volunteer for, I think, all sorts of things that come up in our world where we need community input and community support, so it'll be great to have her on the other side of the fence, so to speak, as a community member. Mayor, you wanna add anything into your mayor's report?
Yeah.
Are you gonna make her come and sit up front?
Yeah, can you come up front? Thank you, and you can sit.
I was gonna joke during my finance report, just for Jason, that I put my house up for sale yesterday, but no, I love.
Liar, liar.
And then there's enough just up here, we'll shove it off later.
So, so Becky, it's been a real pleasure having you as our finance director, the list that Deborah had up before, that's, those are some of the big things, but there's just been a tremendous amount of work that this community, this council, former council, Patsy, and I have been able to get done in this community because of your work. You have been able to help us tackle some really challenging financial issues with North Kelsey, you, you made it possible for get, for us to get the synthetic turf field done, you made it possible for us to get the financing together to do the remodel that we're doing right now on city, you know, on the city hall and the new administrative wing and therapeutic court. I, the, you know, council members, the success is a great team, to be able to succeed means you have to have a great team, and a big part of that is, is your finance director, the, the money, knowing how to manage the funds, knowing how to leverage different resources, that sort of thing, it's the Rubik's Cube, if you will, of, of what makes government work, you know, you've got project managers that will get their things done, that will schedule and budget and their sorts of things, but that stuff's not possible if you can't pull together the money and leverage things, that's a, a common denominator in, in what we do, so you've been an engine here to make us successful, to make me successful as a mayor, and I so greatly appreciate everything you've done here for our community. I have something in my pocket that I'm gonna give you. So, thank you again, and I'm gonna miss having you as part of our team, I'm gonna miss seeing you every Tuesday, miss talking to you on 522, because that's, that's where my office is these days, and so thank you so much for everything. Councilmember Scarborough.
Now it's time to say something, I'm gonna echo, echo what a lot of people have said, especially me being real raw and, and not understanding a great deal, and I appreciate your helping me as a person on the finance committee, helping me understand things, being very patient with me, spending extra time to go over some things sometimes and putting it in simple terms so I could understand it, thank you, appreciate it, and in the words of the Navy term, you're one of the best bean counters I've ever encountered, so, thank you for all you did for us.
I do have to say, and this one's for Zach Lell too, I do remember my first official title here was bean counter and waiting, so.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
You're amazing, Becky, I feel very unlucky is that my tenure with you was so short and I also feel a little bit of guilt, like I helped drive you out with all my questions, I would probably do the same thing, but I, I was thinking earlier on and it came up on, on the board and all those bullets, but in, in a way, you are a sort of architect of modern or Monroe as it currently is today, I think your, your footprint will be around long, long past you being in this position and, and for all of us to, to see, I mean, your, your fingerprint is all over all these different projects in town and, as Jeffrey said, you solving this Rubik's Cube for the city so many times throughout the years is just absolutely incredible and you deserve space in, in Monroe's history, I, I think, so thank you for knowledge that you imparted me in the short time and thank you for all that you've done for, for the city and for the community.
Councilmember Hanford.
I'd like to finance your tab tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, we, we talked about this a few weeks ago, about how depressed I was getting Deborah's email about you having to leave, and that was my selfish thinking, like, oh my goodness, how could this, you do that, and then I was so happy and excited for you and the future because you're just gonna continue to go up and up, and so, we mentioned it weeks ago, but, and it's been said multiple times, we're very thankful, we're very grateful, and this list is just a touch, this is like the accomplishments, this isn't the, so thanks.
Thank you so much, and we'll open up the line later.
Well, I don't know, I might have to keep that four flags for myself.
Yeah, I would, I would, yeah, you'll open during executive session. All right, well, I, I can't top anything on our mayor's report, so thank you so much, Becky. All right, the next item that we have on the agenda this evening is an executive session under item 11, this is 11.1, potential litigation person to RCW 42.30.110 subsection 1, subsection little i, there will be action to follow, if nothing else, to adjourn the meeting, we're gonna do this for an initial, seven minutes, 10 minutes, what would you like?
Let's do 10.
Okay, we're gonna do this for an initial 10 minutes, starting at 8:05 PM, and any extensions will be announced in the room and also online, we are in executive session starting now for an initial 10 minutes.
Executive session has been extended three minutes. Executive session has been extended three minutes.
All right, we're back out of executive session, all right, we're back out of executive session, we have no further business this evening and we are adjourned unless there's objection, seeing none, we are adjourned, have a great week, everybody, have a happy fourth.